So it will be with the Facebook. I need to do something processing.
But it is actually, it is on Facebook.
It was live, but afterwards it still didn't process it.
It only showed like six. Yeah.
Addison, do you have a, do you have a copy of the April twenty second?
I do not. That's the one that we couldn't find. Oh yeah, I do have a copy, not signed.
Okay, I just would like to have a copy.
Should we?
Yes, signed, I sent down.
But it doesn't look like.
Yeah, I know. You can see it.
It's now six o'clock. I'll start with a road call. You want to go ahead and start?
I'd be glad to marry and sue.
Addison Miller.
Julie Jennings.
Has everybody had time to review minutes from last month?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from last month?
I approve the minutes.
Do you make the motion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we're gonna start with the first one on the docket. Address of fifteen eighty Josephine Street, Martinsville, Indiana. Would you like to speak on that behalf?
Yes.
Go ahead and come up here, state your name and put your name on the paper. Do you have no pen?
Yeah, there's a sign.
Okay.
I'm Ralph Rollins. I've got some photos I'd like to pass out.
Please do. He will be an expert on this before it's done. Thank you so much.
So basically, we're just asking for a side yard setback from ten foot to six foot two inches. The property is actually gonna be twenty-six foot away from Josephine Street because there's another small parcel. It's like an easement in between the parcel we're looking at purchasing and the road. There's an empty garage that's in that road. Red markings on the draw and angle. That's where the house is.
Is there anything else you'd like to say about her?
I think that's about all.
Yeah, we pretty much covered everything.
Right.
So the setback is off of here. That's Josephine. You've got a utility easement here and then you've taken twenty-six feet off of that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Can I see that wrong when they get done looking at it?
You guys should have a say.
Okay, I thought you wrote on that.
There's red markings.
Yeah, yeah, I see that. So since you don't have anything else, I'm gonna ask if there's anybody opposing.
Okay.
Would you like to speak?
Would you like to speak?
I had a conversation with him.
Don't forget to state your name, put your name on the paper.
Yeah, okay, Ed Lattell, Franklin Lattell, whatever you wanna call me today. I live right across the street from the property in question and I had an opportunity to talk with, uh...
Rockus? Yes.
About what his plans were and my main objection has always been trying to run driveways out on that corner of Victor Drive. It's just not safe the way the streets are set up. And he assured me that he would try to run the driveways in the parking coming off of Josephine Street. That was my whole concern all along. The setbacks being front and back or side to side, that really wasn't a problem with me.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions?
So tonight, you're asked, uh, there's been proposed fines of fact presented by the petitioner. This is a variance from developmental standards, so you have to find three different fines of fact that would exist. All three have to be present. So the petitioner is proposing the fines of fact being number one, that the approval will not be interest to the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the community for the following reasons. We're asking for a reduced site setback to build a duplex. The duplex is thirty-seven feet, eight inches wide and a width and the property is fifty feet. So we are asking for the setback to be reduced three foot, ten inches on each side of the duplex. Number two, the use and value of the area adjacent to property included in the variance will not be affected in a substantially adverse manner for the reasons that the building of the duplex will improve the look of the addition with a brick facade, a six twelve roof pitch, hipped roof on a slab and landscape. This will improve the look of the addition, neighborhood, and surrounding houses. And then number three, the strict application of terms of zoning orders will result in practical difficulties in the use of the property. The actual practical difficulties found to exist here are as follows. The duplex is large to fit on the lot and a current ten-foot side setback. Police attached survey showing the duplex on the lot. They're proposing no stipulations. So, um, the board is free to, if you, if you make a motion to approve, you're free to approve the fines of fact as presented by the petitioner or you're certainly free also to enter your own fines of fact. If there's something different you would like to see, but again, you have to find that they meet all three of those fines. Since we have three members here tonight, we do have a quorum, but it, in order to pass, it will take all three to vote in favor.
I make a motion that we, um, approve the, uh, the request as it was written.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's been approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next on the, uh, the docket is Janine Martin and Jeff Martin. They're wanting to build a, um, wedding, a building for wedding gatherings, small wedding gatherings, and possibly down the line, uh, cabins to stay in on North Upland Road, right across Street, Atkins. Would you guys like to come and speak on that behalf?
Can we both come?
Yeah. Just make sure you put both names in.
I'm Janie Martin.
I'm Jeff Martin.
Uh, we printed out a topical view of what we'd like to do here. We wanna start with the pavilion on the waterfront.
Can you pass around the other one?
Okay.
So last time we were here, we, we talked about all of the, um, obstacles that we faced on this property. One being the drainage onto the street. And then we received an email regarding the, um, fire trucks getting in and out and so forth. Our intention, our intention with this project is, is to do it up to code by all means. Mr. Oaks provided a book of, it was about a book, right? Of what the requirements would be for, to address that drainage issue and we don't have a problem complying with that at all. So also, the cabins that we want to put on here will be, um, in nature, on the hill, above the water. People want to be in nature, but they don't want to be bothered by nature, if that makes sense. So we plan to have, um, luxury in nature. That's our goal with this project. We really don't want more than five cabins on the land at this time. We'll see how that, how that goes, if it's approved. If we, if we do need to expand on that at a later time, um, we'll see about doing that then. But like I said, with our cabins, we do intend for those to also be up to code and we plan to work with the planning commission for anything that we do there. So we understand that we are on a light industrial zoning. Manufacturing as it is or, or whatever that entails. And what we're asking to do is something lesser than the zoning. We also don't see what else can be done at that property. It's not really, I mean, I, I don't see how we could put anything in there that, um, would constitute manufacturing because, um, it has already been manufactured as much as it can be, being the, the quarry, in our opinion. So, um, it's a beautiful place that we want to bring people from all over into Martinsville. And I have also talked with our locals, um, the local businesses. One in particular, the Brick House on Main. I have no intention, or we have no intention, to compete with that project. In fact, we don't want this to be, um, a party place. We strictly want this to be a ceremony venue and then we want the people to go have their reception with, at the Brick House with Michelle. Right, so that's not, not what we're after. We just want a couple hours, we wanna rent it out for a couple of hours at the time. And then maybe some smaller gatherings for family reunions or whatever the case may be in renting the small venue. We're not talking about putting stuff on it either. We basically want to start with a roof 'cause it's a, it's a beautiful setting. I don't know if anyone had made it out there or not, but, um, yeah. So it's just a beautiful setting. We, we want to bring people here from all over to experience it. It's, it's like the Little Grand Canyon of Martinsville. So, do you have anything else?
I'm just here for questions, if there are questions about infrastructure.
I know Dell's got some. I don't see anybody that's opposing you to speak, so. Does anybody, is anybody opposing you to speak? Does any of the board meeting, does any of the board have any questions about it?
What, what is your projected timeframe? When would you start construction and that sort of thing?
Well, um, that, first, we have to clean it up. There is a lot of cleanup required because that property has been abused as it sits. So we don't know how long it's gonna take us to get it cleared and cleaned. So, I mean, ideally, I would love to start tomorrow. I mean, that's why we kind of hurried along with this process and we came in here in April because we wanted to start clearing some of the saplings and that before the leads all came in and, um, but we didn't take any equipment out there till we got an answer here. So as soon as possible, hopefully within the next year or two.
You've already purchased this property, correct?
We purchased it, yes. We, yes.
If for some reason it doesn't get approved in the, the manner that you would like, do you have any other options or ideas for that property?
Not that we know of, personal use probably.
After the meeting, I can run one by you.
Okay.
If it does not.
Okay, thank you.
What, uh, you, you wanna start with the pavilion? So, uh, are you thinking about having water? What are you gonna do about, um, septic sewer? What's the thoughts on that?
It is city sewer, city water.
Okay.
So we would, we would definitely plan on using the city's facilities.
Okay. Lift station.
Yes.
Okay, so you'd have to install a lift station on there?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I know it was after the last meeting that, that, um, I think somebody from the city had some discussion thing with you or maybe with Mr. Burkett concerning our, our fire ordinance in regards to the, the width of that roadway and the turning radius up there. Do you have enough room to make it?
Again, this was a, a working rough quarry. So all the big trucks were up there and pulling out and yes, it's a big, wide roadway. And there's plenty of space up there.
And, and, you know, we just, what we'd have to do is, is get the fire inspector there and
Sure.
Find out what's required and it just probably means more, um, excavation and more infrastructure to, to create that clearance.
And again, we plan to do it by code. We want, you know, Jeff and I have been running multimillion dollar businesses for the last twenty-ish years of our lives. So we, we know how to, how to do this, so.
In all transparency, though, they did give you an idea of the approximate amount of cost?
No.
No.
So first step is if we gain approval, then, then we simply have to go out and, and work with contractors to find, put a budget together and that'll tell us what we, what the options are.
And if the budget is out of our lead, then, you know, this may be a waste of time, right? And, and we've looked at all of the things, okay? So this is a big investment for us and we're also looking at what that end of town looks like to people. I mean, and it, it could use some improvement. So that's a factor for us as well, but we're willing to overlook that at this time.
City's certainly not against this. It's a wonderful idea, it's a grand plan. Our caution is that there's a lot involved. I've seen a lot of developers lose a lot of money and the second guy, Ed, takes over and is successful at it. There's a lot to this. I've provided them code requirements, the department is regarding their requirements. The next step in here is engineering and architectural drawings, something we can approve in the building, building department. That step could be, first step could be just what they were asking for, go in and clean up the site.
Are you folks, uh, okay with agreeing as a stipulation that that road would be paved?
I would like to know how much of the road you're talking about. Are you talking about from Blue Bluff to our entrance?
Talking about, talking about from Blue Bluff to your entrance, including the turning radius.
That, that's no problem.
Okay.
Our entrance is...
That's where I was getting at.
Okay. Oh, the price for?
To get it done.
I see.
Yeah, I think it, it's, the, the bark edge has to be concreted in so it, yeah. And then, I don't think anything else would ever survive unless it's, because the water carries everything away. So I just don't, I think that it has to happen that way, otherwise, uh, it's, it's not, it won't sustain.
Is the bottom of that road shared with Joe Branding?
Yes.
It's a share.
Yeah, so we do have some coordination.
Yeah, 'cause like I said last time, in my way of thinking, it would need to be paved and you would need to have the, the grated, the grates at the bottom where it joins Blue Bluff to be able to catch that water running off there and then carry it down.
Anybody else have any questions? I would assume if a motion was presented that it would be, as long as they stayed up to code, it was presented to them and they, they invited that.
What, what about the possibility of a tiered approval? Where you start with, this is what you must bring to us next, and then the next tier of that. I think there could be some advantage to that because they could do some backfinding and some, it might save them time. It might actually save you some money as well. If you, I mean, we've introduced the idea that you have to have the asphalt paved drive, right? And then, in, in addition, adding to that motion that, that, you know, the, as verification that all codes have been met or whatever, if, if their codes are being used in the right term, I don't know. But verification that, that this is how we plan to meet those kinds of things. Because that would give you the opportunity to go ahead and get started with backfinding. Because if, this is gonna be expensive venture, there's no doubt about it. It's just gonna, it's gonna be an expensive venture. And to try to, to give you that approval for everything all at one time, I don't know. I, I, I'm just, I'm just, you know, throw that out there.
I think what you're asking for is conceptual drawings, that you can do some budgeting off of.
Exactly.
And do that with it.
So, so my, my question or my, uh, thought is if, if we don't have approval to do it all, all of it is what will support the investment.
I see.
So I, I don't, stair, stair stepping, essentially, we'd have to put money out there, potentially a lot of money, and then find out that potentially we don't get accepted. If you say yes, just meet the codes, put a, put, kept a water basin in the drive, then, then as long as you're following codes, you can do this. Now we, now I can put a plan together that says this is what revenue we can bring in to support the cost of, of this infrastructure.
And I, and I'm, I'm just, I'm just literally in my own mind thinking, what is the, is the most expeditious way to get this done for you and for the city? But you're right, I mean, if you want to, if you wanna invest the time and effort into that, if that's what you're asking for, then it's up to the, the board to determine if that's what you do. Orient me a little bit more on this diagram. So am I, am I looking at, what is a, like a, that's the quarry right there in the center?
Um, it's, the lake is in the center.
Center, okay. And the parking, where is that exactly? Is that down with the base?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
When you come into, to the property,
Right.
You turn left and then you circle around and it's...
It's a large area that's...
Right. What is the plan, what's the plan for? Is it, you run a shuttle to take people up to what I believe is this pavilion and the cabins or how, how?
We can shuttle if we need to. Sure. We can, we can shuttle, um, or people can walk. It's a beautiful walk.
Absolutely, it's, yeah.
But, you know, I'm, I'm at the point where I'm gonna, like, where's the shuttle?
My mom?
Right?
I know. I completely understand.
That's the exact...
Right now, we have the gator to take her back.
Well, that sounds perfect.
But, but if we were, um, renting the place out for a nice wedding, we would, we would have our multi-seated
Sure.
Golf cart or whatever for that purpose, so.
The reason, I think the reason why, that what she's saying as far as approving it is at a certain level is because when you start introducing cabins and water, living up there, it changes.
Okay. We don't want people to live there.
Renting it out for like a day or two days.
And so this is, this is where, um, we have to decide what to do with the water. If we want to include the water as part of this, um, we have insurance to deal with, with that. But I will tell you, it is a very nice feature to have, right?
Are you talking about the, I'm sorry, interrupt. Are you talking about the, the actual?
The code is different whenever people are renting out the cabins and staying up there. The code changed, they have to, to do more like, uh, Mr. Dell coffee was talking about as far as, uh, the fire trucks coming in. Be able to turn around.
So are you talking about water access for utility use?
Or the lake.
Water or the lake?
So the pavilion?
Yes.
But the pavilion wouldn't be a strict restrictions as far as what you gotta meet. If, right now, all you have is the pavilion. Once you start adding in the rental cabins, the restrictions of what you have to meet is greater.
Okay, so that then begs to question, are we here to get a variance for the business or for the rules of what that entails? Like, we said, we totally intend to follow all of the code requirements to run this business. But does the board want to approve a variance, use variance so that we can start this business? But again, we plan to bring it to code.
And, and back to bringing, getting budgets on what it's going to cost to get us into there. As we said, it's pretty involved to, to create the road and the, and the drainage. I don't, I, I think we need the cabin to know that we have those as, as potential income to know that we can afford that portion of it.
I understand. When you go to the bank, you need a, this is how much you're roughly making.
I mean, we're looking at a, a legacy investment, the same as the whole downtown. The Feniman, uh, Mullen project, right? I mean, I, the ROI is probably way in the future, so.
Yeah, for sure.
I mean...
So, yeah, what the applicants are asking to do now is approve a use variance to be able to use the property not as the I-1 light industrial... able to use the property, not as the I-1 light industrial zoning as it currently is, but to use it and have a variance of use for the idea that they have, which would include a pavilion and and including, and what I hear tonight is up to five cabins. I think you guys need to put a limit or or a number on these cabins when you approve it as far as what your motion would be. In addition to that, you obviously have to make the findings that there, the five findings of fact for a use variance have been met. The applicants have presented to you in your packet what they would like you to adopt in regards to those five different stipulations, or five different elements, but it's up to you to either adopt those or to come up with something different. I would then suggest that number six is your stipulations to run with the variance. That's where you would include language that the, there has to be a drain catch base at the intersection of the private road and the property of Blue Bluff Road. Private road must be asphalt from Blue Bluff Road to the property entrance, including the turning radius. I think those need to be stipulations. And then your other stipulation would be if you wanted to put a number of cabins that you're going to limit them to build.
As in eventually or just now?
Well, again, you're, if you're going to prove tonight is the use, so you, I know you don't have a conceptual plan about where these are going to be placed or whatever, but again, they would have to comply with our ordinance in regards to setback and those sorts of things when they place these cabins on site.
Example, how much space it actually takes per cabin to actually put it there, how far away from each other.
But that, that would be, that's, that's already included in what our ordinance is. So when the building department would issue them building permits, they would make sure that's all done. They would do the inspections. They would, they would approve all of that. But you certainly can put as a stipulation, a limit on the number of cabins you're going to approve. Okay?
And so right now, we, we would ask for that number to be five. We don't know that we would ever want to do more than that. And and later on, if we see that, that it's something that's successful and manageable, and we would like to do more than we, at that time, come back and ask for permission for whatever that looks like.
There are four acres there to work with also. Wow, buildable.
Full, gotcha.
Besides the water, the lake.
I would like to make a motion to approve, under condition of what Mr. Coffey was saying, that what you already plan on doing as far as paving the driveway with the turnaround for trucks, big trucks, like fire engines, and the number of five cabins, that what you're saying. And that you obviously stay within stipulations of code.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
I second.
So let me go ahead and, and let me get, let me get this in the record so that we capture everything and make sure this is what your motion is since it's now been moved and seconded. So I understand the motion would be to approve a variance of use for this property that is on North Blue Bluff Road, doesn't currently have a street address. With the approved, with the finds of fact being that the approval not be addressed to the public health, safety morals, and general welfare of the community due to the following reasons. This land was once a shale quarry, since then has become a neglected dump site. You should see the beauty and potential and would like to redeem it into a gathering site. Number two, the use and value of the area adjacent to the property included in various will not be affected in a substantially adverse manner because our intention for proposed use is non-industrial rather it is peaceful and beautiful gathering site. Number three, the need for the variance arises from some condition peculiar to the property involved, namely, most of the property is a body of water limiting space for industrial use. Number four, the strict application of terms of zoning orders will constitute unnecessary hardship if applied to the property for which the variance is sought, namely, the strict application of zoning ordinance to not allow a less intense use of this property would be a hardship in itself. Property is an ideal location to attract people to Martinsville. And number five, the approval does not interfere substantially with the comprehensive plan adopted in this five measures of this chapter because whether this property is used as a rental, rental or light industrial use, both uses fall under commercial use, granting a variance protects the encompassing plan versus seeking a lesser rezoning of the property. With that, there'd be stipulations that would run with the land and with this project. Number one, that a catch base, a drain catch basin would be installed at the intersection of the private road and Blue Bluff Road. Number two, the private road would be asphalt from Blue Bluff Road to the property entrance, including the turning radius, according to our ordinance, and that you're allowing the building of a pavilion as well as five cabin, rental cabins.
So that's an, you're adding that to the motion basically as kind of an addenda?
This would be a stipulation that has to be added to the finds of fact. The finds of fact end up getting recorded, so this will be part of that, has to run with the land. So they're now going to have to do that in order for this project to comply.
Does the motion need to be amended in any way to?
Uh, probably just make a motion. If you want to approve what I just read as the actual motion, then we'll have a second.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Del Coffey has read it.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Thank you for your time.
Be fun to watch it happen. Yes.
We will, for sure. Yes.
We can get all those words going to, they're called again, I'm not.
Yeah, so I'm gonna have, this will have to be, read to the time. And then what we've come up with now as a department is there's a, a separate page that we're going to put on these that will be signed by you and acknowledges that on such, such a day, the board approved the variance based on the preceding stipulations and finds of fact. And then whoever presides will sign that, that that'll go to record.
So I just, you can say that a motion was made and seconded to the approval by you?
So it defines a fact.
And they did their budgeting checks through our experience.
It was everything I was thinking, like you had to get it, all that's been done. Okay, so I'm gonna write this down now.
Um, sorry. The next meeting would be June 24th here at 6:00 PM. Can I make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, will you adjourn the meeting?
I second.
All in favor to adjourn the meeting?
Aye.
We are done.
So.
There was a second one.
And the 4200.
So what do you think?
Look, Steve, did you see those drawings and information they sent? You couldn't rent, I tried, I rented them, so I just couldn't rent them.
One was in Charlotte.
And pride in the year Thursday last week.
I tried, like.
Okay, at 7:00 PM, I'd like to call the Planning Commission for the City of Martinsville Wednesday, May the 28th, 2025 to order. First up, our secretary is not with us this evening, so I'd like to ask for somebody to keep minutes this evening.
I'd be glad to. Steve Bodie.
Okay, Steve's gonna keep minutes. With that said, Steve, would you do roll call, please?
Sure will. Richard Bastin, Steve Bodie's here, Jim Burkhart?
Here.
Joe Disney?
Here.
Rick Durnell?
Here.
Caleb Forster? Richard Heacock?
Here.
Ann Miller?
Present.
Jason Scott? Marilyn Siderwitz? I see Troy Swan is not here, so I'll mark him as absent as well.
So we have six members here present. We do have a quorum. I'd ask if everybody will please, have you looked over the minutes from last month?
Only thing I noticed at the top of page two, the last sentence of that paragraph says the sign would extend out no more than 36 feet. I think that was inches.
Inches.
Where is that, Rick?
Uh, the very first paragraph at the top of page two.
Okay, Steve is making changes there. Does anybody else see anything and he's corrected in the minutes?
Inches, not feet.
I make a motion that we pass the minutes with the correction of the feet to inches, 36 feet to 36 inches.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Minutes are approved with the correction. Okay, next up, new business, docket number PC number 25009, historic district approval. Approval to change the inside and outside of a building, address 188 190 East Morgan Street, back of the building. Owner is Red Brick Trading LLC. Is there a representative present? Could you please come forward? There's a sign in sheet there. If you please state your name and fill out the sign in sheet.
I'm Ron Stanhouse. I'm the owner of Red Brick Trading.
Okay, Building Department, Mr. Schrader, do you have all your mailings as well as notice of publications turned in or anything that needed to be done on this?
In the downtown district, notification is not necessary. But I do want to say that back several months ago, when Ron was in, presented a drawing. I informed him he needed to take that renderings to the state. We've not received anything back from the state for this project.
Okay, thank you. Ron, you want to go ahead and make your presentation?
That's interesting. I, I thought we were cleared through the state and we're giving that certification.
Ron, the procedure is that there's a set of drawings that you would provide and send to the state. The state would view them and send them back, which would be a CDR, which is a design release. I have not received anything.
Can I show you?
I have.
Did you see any of that? That's the architect's package for the state.
What are you saying? You need to submit that, the state, the state design release for commercial, build of this truck will change.
The state approved that.
I don't have any knowledge.
But you got a copy of it. So that's what, that's all. That didn't have anything to do with what you're doing here, right?
Right, right. Okay.
So what you're saying is that the Building Department has not received the, the stuff from the state?
Not received approval from the state.
Okay, but Ron can go ahead and present this and we can do everything and then, and then you and him can get together on the approval from the state.
We receive that document, we can, we can do a permit process and Ron will be able to move forward.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
So we need to table this then?
Okay, Ron, go ahead and.
Well, so this presentation is essentially about a 2,300 square foot, two-car garage that sits, it hasn't been assigned an address, although architect found something from long ago, maybe 124 North Sycamore. I would call it 140 North Sycamore, but at some point it'll get an address.
Excuse me, Ron, but what, what will happen is once we receive that document, we will reach up to the county. They will assign an address to that location.
I refer to it as 140, but that's for conversation purposes. Two-car garage unfinished. It was formerly Ham Machine Shop. I, I saw Hams operate out of there. I've been around for best part of 18, less than 20 years. So they used to run the forklifts in and out of that garage and kept materials and, you know, big barrels. So they sold that quite a number of years ago to me, and I've just kept cars in it as a garage. But as the downtown has filled up and become more successful, there's fewer and fewer, now maybe no vacant buildings downtown. But as the downtown has filled up and become more successful, there's fewer and fewer, now maybe no vacant buildings downtown. So it seemed like it's time to finish out an unfinished building in the nine-block downtown. Turn it into usable retail space.
Is it, you don't know whether it's gonna be one or two spaces just depending on the potential leasing?
It had the potential for both. Personally, I lean towards one, twenty-three-hundred-square-foot space.
But in your drawings here, you're showing there's two smaller man doors with two larger glass areas, so.
That's the one the architect picked. Oh, we have it as a one-door space as well.
Okay.
Mr. Stanhouse, what is the, what's the exterior material?
That's drawn to be a siding, some kind of a hardened line potentially.
Okay. And really, the only reason I ask that, most of the buildings that we look at for this are brick. So we're, I think the whole reason that we ask people to come forward is so that we know they're keeping with the historic materials. And I pulled up some of the old fire maps and between nineteen oh eight and nineteen sixteen, they had it labeled as corrugated steel on a wood frame building. So the stucco is not, is not historically accurate anyway. I don't know how everybody else feels about a synthetic material rather than brick, but I don't, I don't have any evidence that this building ever was brick in the back section.
So there's damage to that building, which kind of accelerated my application for this renovation. Rather than just renovate an old building that needed everything, repair it, let's just renovate it completely so it can be productive usable space. The contractor identified it as ceramic brick underneath and maybe you noticed, maybe you went by and looked, but it's been damaged by the neighbor who ran his car into it. So it's fragile ceramic brick. So I don't know when the plaster went over the top.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Stanhouse?
Since we approve of the sod, we really can't approve of the sod if we don't know exactly what it's gonna be looking like, right? As far as one building or two, if you're gonna have one door or two doors. So I think.
I've told the contractor, I mean, two giant windows and then one small window and a door. That's where I'm going. The architect drew it up as A and B.
I'm sorry, what, what did you say, Ron?
I don't know. You got that?
Mm-hmm.
Probably do. So the architect drew it two different ways for us to evaluate. I've just assumed see it as a one-unit, twenty-three-hundred-square-feet. So rather than two-door ways and a wall up the middle, it was just a smaller window.
So it's gonna be essentially two businesses, right? One business, oh, with two doors?
No, take the door out, it's just a window.
Huh?
It'll just be some panes of glass. One door and the other one be.
Okay, just the rendering looks like it's two.
It, right.
Do you have a tenant in mind already?
No, I originally was poking around for like a restaurant, you know, food service that might wanna do some catering to our same-shoring store. It really hasn't been, and it's a difficult business as I've been doing it for nearly forty years, but in Bloomington. But I think it could be an easy retail space, light use. There's a lot of foot traffic anymore downtown. I just would like to see some additions to the retail.
Do we know how many vacant businesses we have downtown right now?
Are you saying vacant businesses?
Yes, yeah.
We don't have a large amount, but I want to make a point clear here. What Ron has presented in speaking of one door, when this application goes to the state, the state might revert back to two means of egress.
And there is a door on the alley.
So would it be prudent to table this at this time until it comes back from the state?
Well, I'd like to see, I would like to see what it's actually gonna look like in the, once it's approved by the state before we, we approve it personally. I might wanna see the final, what's finally gonna look like, so.
So tabling it would be?
I would think we table till we get some information, till you get approved and we get a final evaluation going.
Okay.
If it's a single.
I'm sorry?
If it's a single office, there are all two means of egress. If you try to split that up and that one that's two B, south side does not have a second exit, likely means.
Well, it just seems like there's a lot of kind of unknowns right now, so I would like, I would move to table docket number two-five-zero-zero-nine until we have more information back from the state and.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to table.
I'll say.
Mr. Burkhart, seconded the motion. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you, Ron.
Sure.
Okay, next up on under new business, we have docket number P C two-five-zero-one-zero. A preliminary planned unit development request. Approval of forty-six lots in Indian Creek Village, section four. Address is seventy-five Industrial Drive. Owner is Indian Creek Homes LLC. Is there a representative here? If you could please state your name.
Name is Caleb Tows.
Can you spell your last name?
T O W L E S.
Caleb with a K?
With a C.
Thank you.
Building Department, do we have all the certified mailings as well on this and notices turned in? We do?
Yes.
Okay. Caleb, go ahead and give your presentation.
No, we're planning on doing the next phase, this obviously, this is a preliminary, doing the next phase of the Indian Creek Village. Be on the east side, forty-six lots, as he had stated. You can see that on the sheets that you have or I, okay, I have the drawings in front. Okay. So yeah, happy to answer any questions you have.
So this is on Industrial Drive?
No, it's right off of Artesian.
It's right, okay, because it says something about Industrial Drive.
So it says approval of fifty-one lots, we're asking for forty-six?
We actually recently changed it. They allowed us to go ahead and change it to forty-six. We made the building footprint a little bit bigger, so we reduced the number of lots so that the building size could be a little bit larger.
Am I correct in that section four is the last section of Indian Creek's homes?
To my knowledge. You know, I think you can change.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Tows?
This is an existing P U D, and so this is an update showing new units that are platted. Does the city have any, building inspector or city have any response on the layout or the size of the lots? Is it consistent with the P U D?
I would ask you to table this tonight because you're taking the stick out of my hands. We had continual problems with stormwater remediation of the sod. Homes that don't have finished streets going to them, streets that were just closed today because we asked them to be closed. We're just not ready for this yet. There are homes left to be built on Wiglawn and the other streets in there. You take my stick away, I still have a stick, but charging violations for every day, I don't want to charge a money, but that would be my option.
So you have issues with what they are doing now in their existing development?
Yeah, we've not complied with the existing development. How can I assure you they will with the future?
And what are the issues again, Gary?
I'm sorry?
What are the issues you're having?
Stormwater, silt, finishing roads, access for people in and out, those kind of things.
Mr. Tows, you have a response to that or?
Well, I'm not the one doing the building, but obviously I'm here to present for, this is just a preliminary so that we can start doing design work in regards to the construction and what takes place there. That's outside my, outside of my control. It is a job site that is under construction as it is, so as far as streets not being completed and things that are going on, sounds like a regular job site to me, but, but again, that's, that's Gary's department, not mine.
Do we have any other questions for either the building department?
So none of these issues have been communicated to you before today?
No.
Have those issues been communicated to the owners of the property?
For instance, Linden Drive is the one that goes, it's tough to text directions in here. Five streets that end in one street that's a Linden that goes across the bottoms of all of them. Two weeks ago, I took a picture in there of the traffic coming through there, butthole, tracking it out on the street. I called the owner about it and went back yesterday and took pictures of the same thing, only it was much worse. It was ready, but the truck just drove through all that mud, drove it out onto Elm Street and Artesian.
I think the answer was yes.
I guess, I got a question for Mr. Coffey. Since this is preliminary request, is that really, does that really fall into us to hold them accountable for that at this point?
Well, what you have presented to you tonight, the application is preliminary plat approval for section four of Indian Creek Village pursuant to what has been presented to you. So that's what is before you this evening in regards to what you're asked to make a decision on.
Is the, is the city council aware of these issues?
Who are you asking that to, Rick?
Anybody that can answer it. I mean, does anybody know the issues that we're talking about here? I mean, the city council eventually approved all this, right?
Right. We've never been made aware of this. I, I mean, I've never been made aware of this.
So the city council's involvement was back when the property was zoned P U D. Okay? That's the extent of the city council's involvement because under statute, they're asked to ultimately approve rezoning requests. All right? Once they approve rezoning requests, anything to do with plats, approval of plats, enforcement of ordinances, enforcement of the plat requirements, falls under plan commission and/or building department planning zone. It's not within the purview of the city council.
Okay, I guess all I'm saying is clearly the city council approved the other sections after we did, right?
For, for the entire land to be zoned P U D, yes. But I think that entire land, all sections, was approved at one time as a planned unit development. They were gonna develop it in sections, which that's what they're doing. But as far as the zoning, that was all done at one time several years ago by, by the city council, yes.
And Rick, as you see, this putt goes back twenty-five years, maybe. If you drive into the older sections in the creek and drive back through there, there's no H, there is no H O A, for instance. So you have some really terrible conditions back through there. There's a difference with putt. We did a putt just a couple of years ago, this now, our home's building there, there's an H O A there, there's landscaping all across Artesian, there's trees and bushes, there's street lighting. There's quite a difference to what was allowed then and what we would allow now.
Rick, did you get your question answered?
I think so.
Any more conversation?
So Dale, we're just asked at this time to approve the lots so that they can start the?
Engineering process.
I'm sorry?
It would be the engineering process.
Okay. So that's basically all we're asked to do.
Yeah, they're asking to approve preliminary plat of section four so they can move forward with engineering. They'll have to present a final plat before they can actually start doing any construction, any, you know, moving of dirt, that sort of thing.
Why make a motion that we approve docket number P C two-five-zero-one-zero?
Can we have a motion before to approve?
I'll make a motion that we approve, I'm sorry. I make a motion that we approve docket number two-five-zero-one-zero.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up under new business. Docket number two-five-zero-one-one, historic district approval. It's approval for the remodel of the Morgan County Courthouse, address ten East Washington Street. Owner is Morgan County, Indiana Building Corporation. Is there a representative here?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain from, I have a disclosed conflict of interest. I'm employed by Morgan County, so I'll be abstaining from any discussion and voting.
Okay, sir, if you please state your name and write your information down there. You look familiar.
Yes.
You've probably done this before.
Yes, just a few times. Good evening, my name's Brian Carter. Live at one-ninety North Fourth Street, and I am the proud representative for District One of Morgan County Commissioners. On behalf of the Commissioners of Morgan County, we're bringing you some renderings of what we're very excited to do, what we've been working on for many, many years. I have brought, as many of you who I've known for most all my life, when it comes to the technical issues, I am smart enough to bring in a technical expert. So I will yield a lot of the technical questions to him, but I just wanted to present to this board. I've had the opportunity to come before the city council, I've had the opportunity to come before the Board of Works. Naturally, this all started with the Morgan County Council because they had to appropriate the funds. I find it in my fifty-five years, next month fifty-six years. I find it, in my 55 years, next month, 56 years of being here, a very exciting time for our community. You can go back in and look at what we're doing and why we're doing it, and we, as we complete the judicial campus, this is just the third phase of that, and we're starting to have people question, so, you know, I encourage them to move to town and buy a paper because this has been going on for many, many, many months and years. We've probably met with the executive group, Gary McDonne, the mayor, on this very topic many, many times. And the reason why is on a project of this magnitude, communication, and, you know, communication face to face and not via porch time. And so, and I mean, I know the, the person that runs Porch Time, he'll be proud that I even mentioned him in a public meeting, so free plug for Porch Time, but this, this is why we come to these meetings, this is why we're expressing what we're doing, so that people will hear it firsthand on where their tax dollars are going. And so we are moving the parking around, we are moving things around. In 1974, there was a study of the downtown courthouse, and it said it was obsolete and that it should probably be demolished, started over, moved, whatnot. They elected at that time in 74 to add to it. In a month, are these televised on YouTube? So these are live too? Well, in a month, I can tell you one of the main reasons why we undertook renovating the courthouse and actually doing a whole new judicial center. And I've told many boards this story, two, two things. One, the courthouse was started in 1857, completed just before 1860. It has served its purpose. Now, we have to march prisoners in their, in their orange jumpsuits down the halls right next to the people that are trying to keep them in prison or in jail for assaulting or whatnot. And I also tell this one, a family was adopting a young child, probably the greatest day in that child's life, they had their balloons and their, their posters, and when the six prisoners walked by with their shackles on and their orange jumpsuits and their orange flip flops, praise the Lord, the guy congratulated her and didn't say something derogatory. But they're, they're that close, there's just no separation, you couldn't move the walls, you couldn't do this. It, it's just not a good building to be a functioning court system anymore. Therefore, i.e., we started looking at going out. There's another main reason that I'll, I'll announce publicly on July 2nd, because of legal reasons, I've been told I can't. But with that, the other two commissioners represent the other two districts. District One is all Washington Townships, Green and Jackson. And trust me, I wanted to keep, as Martinsville is the county seat, I wanted to keep the court system in Martinsville. We had other communities that were very interested and very generous and offered us five acres if we had just moved the court system to their, their town. So I'm proud to say that this is probably the greatest investment that the taxpayers have made in themselves in the history of Morgan County, and this is the third phase. Now, I get asked a lot, why, if we needed a new courthouse, why don't we just get rid of it? Why are we getting ready to put $24 million into it? Why, why, why? What a waste. I yield back to my education from Councilman Bob O'Neil probably 12 years ago, when I made the recommendation that we quit, we, we done heating and cooling and about $2 million worth of work to it. And I said, why do we keep throwing money after this? And I said, well, I'll just tear it down. And Mr. O'Neil in a public meeting said, over my dead body, and then I said, that could be arranged, and then I found out, you can't say stuff like that in public meetings.
Not today.
And that, no, not even back then.
But you just said it again.
I, I know, but I'm already on record, so, so, and Bob and I have made up. What Bob taught me though, after the meeting was, is that we don't tear down the Washington Monument. We don't tear down the Lincoln Memorial. And as the county seat, you don't tear down the county courthouse. Now, the county has grown, and as Mr. Stanhouse stated earlier, downtown is, is growing, shops are filling up, and, you know, we need office space. So had we tore it down, had we given it up, we would still have to, as a county unit, government unit, go out and give the office space. So we brought in a team to look at it, and Mr. Rats will explain, but we're going to totally remodel it. We're getting rid of the, the insides, the cabling, the water system, everything that, you know, we've been, anything that you look at, we're going to touch it, clean it, modernize it, except we understand the importance of history. And I actually ran on the campaign slogan, respect the past, build the future. And that's what I'm here tonight to help do with your assistance, is respect our rich past and build for the future. I've also told this, and I can't say it enough, I can't thank the taxpayers enough, and I tell them, if being conservative means taking capital projects and passing it on to your grandchildren, then label me a rhino. With that, I'd like, because I'm sure you have some technical questions on the looks and what we're doing, I'd like to introduce Eric Rats.
May I ask a quick question, Mr. Collier? Briefly, it will be administrative functions in what is the old courthouse?
Yes.
We're going to call it the courthouse still?
That is a very good debate.
Yeah.
We, we've thought about the signage on, you know, formerly known as the courthouse, you know, we, we've debated that because there will, there will be all kinds of confusion.
But, so other county offices will be back in that building?
Yes, yes, the treasurer, the clerk, or not the clerk, but the auditor, we'll fill it up, we'll still be a little tight. One, one thing that is essential is, I'm a firm believer that we need to get our county employees out of the basements of our buildings. Our, our basements were really never designed to house offices, they were designed to be for storage, and most every government building that has a basement now has offices in it.
Just a quick question, when, when did you say, what was the year that the, whoever they brought in is to, to say what the, you know, what shape the courthouse was in?
1974.
1974, and they said it was obsolete in 1974.
Mm-hmm.
Wow, okay.
And if you look at all these meetings, and if you, if you look at all the things you jumped through, I understand now, I made this joke to the council when this first started, can anybody, and I'll open it up here, can anybody tell me the three commissioners in 1857 that commissioned the building of the courthouse? The records were burnt in the late 1890s, they think to cover up something funny. Nobody's really for sure, and I tell, well, the only thing I can tell you, those three commissioners probably weren't reelected. Mr. Rats?
All right, so I am Eric Rats, lifelong Martinsville resident. 57 and a half years ago, Dale and I were in this room probably learning CPR with our dads as they were fired from here. So I am the architect for the project, all of the projects with the county right now. I would like, as Commissioner Collier said, like to extend the invite to everyone right now, just as a side note, July 2nd at 5:30 PM is the building dedication, Lieutenant Governor will be there for the new judicial center. It's going to be a big deal. As Commissioner Collier said, it's not happened since 1859. Everybody in Morgan County should go. It is a very unique situation from that point of view. So I'm just going to give you a super highlight, high overview of what we're doing on the project, very specifically with the building. As Commissioner Collier noted, we are touching literally every square inch of the building, on the interior and the exterior, everything. So most importantly, what you're most concerned about is the exterior of the building, is back about 1990, they replaced the roof on the building, they put the roof on, that's what is at this point now. We are totally replacing the roof with all new roof panels, we're putting all new gutters, all new downspouts. The corbels, I will loosely say like what we had up here, you have on your building, we did it on the new fire station when we built that, the corbels are in horrific condition. We're replacing all that, all the soffits, all the fascias, all of the windows in the building, all the entry doors into the building. We are cleaning all of the brick, all of the stone on the building. Everything is being cleaned as you would do in a historic project, okay? This is not sandblasting 160-year-old brick, which you would never do. This is pressure washing with the detergents that you use to clean exteriors of historic buildings. We are very, very, you know, just concerned about that overall pressure. Any tuck pointing of the existing mortar, we use the right type of mortar because you don't use the same mortar that you use on a brand new building today. It is a different type of brick, and it requires different types of mortar. You probably have read, we went to the city council, or the BCA and stuff, about the whole site, all the, everything on the site, massive changes on the whole exterior. It's all new landscaping, it's all new sidewalks, it's new curbs, we're changing some of the parking. It is, it is completely going to approve the things on the exterior of the building. We are doing a small addition on what I would say is the northwest corner of the building. If currently, as you walk into the building now, like where the security checkpoint is, if you would just go straight, where it used to be the entrance and exit probably up until 20 years ago, we are doing an addition on the northwest corner of the building. We are doing that addition specifically to meet ADA requirements in the building. We're putting in an elevator that you actually can ride in, more than one person, that can also get a journey-sized elevator that goes up and down to the first and second floor of the building. We are also, if any of you have ever been in the courthouse, you've tried to use the restroom, it is extremely small. We're putting in new public toilet rooms, men's and women's on both the first floor and the second floor. We're putting in two new staff toilet rooms on each floor, hard access, and then we are also putting in a mothers' room, obviously for breastfeeding mothers and things, which is an ADA requirement, which you should have in every building now that's a publicly owned building from that point of view. That is the addition. When you look at the exterior of the building, from my recollection and from my review of the building since 1859, that building's been added on to five times. You do, you look around the building, there are, I believe, five different additions when we look at what was original to the building. We are going, we are being absolutely sympathetic and trying to match to the best possible options that we can on brick color, on stone color, on the roof lines, on the gables, or on the gable on the north end with the, the corbels, the soffit, the fascia, the downspouts, even the little half-round downspouts that we have now, it's going to be absolutely as close as possible of matching it. You can't match it exactly, okay? In, in no building can you match any kind of a brick when there are 160 years difference, but we are doing, there's actually, if you go on the, the west side, north end, I think there's six or seven brick samples out there that we've been looking at. Y'all want to go take a look at, there's similar options from that point of view. Interior, Commissioner Collier was right, other than load bearing walls, we're gutting the interior. It is going to look very different on the interior. We are approving the exterior envelope of the building to make it actually more, to meet the Indiana Energy Code with all the thermal characteristics of it. It is going to be sympathetic to the, to the historic environment of the project for what the building is, but it is going to be very modernized at the same time. I know Gary McDonne, the mayor, has seen it more than once, we've shown renderings of the interior of the building, Commissioner Collier, all the commissioners have seen it, council, county council have seen it, they're very impressed with what we're able to do. Just real quickly, I know the question was asked, but it is going to be the recorder, the surveyor, plan commission, or the planning office, the assessor, the treasurer, soil and water, the, if I didn't say the treasurer, treasurer. Basically, the, the only folks that are not moving from the existing building, which we are working with, is the commissioners, the council, they're going to be staying in the saddle room, the existing building, the Purdue Extension's staying in that building, the technology or the IT department's staying in the building, everybody else is moving over here to the, to the courthouse. The historic courthouse is what we're finding the project. Just also one other thing before I'll answer any questions. On February 24th of this year, 2025, we received the complete design, construction design release from the Indiana Department of Homeland Security. Mr. Strayer was emailed a copy of it from the, from the state at that point in time, but we have the full release. What we are looking at is, like I said, July 2nd, the building dedication, the courts, all the courts, the clerk, Brian Foley at Community Corrections, they are all moving into the building. There's a two-week period, like I think it starts a week, the week after, so that's the fourth, it's like the seventh, through then, there's a two-week period that they're all moving into that. Judge Knutkin will be in operation after one week, everyone else, the courts are down for two weeks. We then start the renovation immediately on the project, and it will be substantially complete, owner occupied the first quarter of 2027. Everything will be completed at that time. So I'm here to answer any questions. Obviously, I'm very passionate, you know, I think anytime you grow up in a community, you always remember your high school. Quite honestly, this building, very near, near your library, your courthouse, and your church, those are ten area, those are five important pride, or buildings, in whatever you grow up in a community, and I've been able to touch post all of those, and I'm very proud of that.
And this is, I'm just asking a side note. What, what's going to happen in the Court Services Building?
Who's... I can't, that's, that's a commissioner decision.
I don't think that has anything to do right now with the handle of what we're going to have here.
I know, I know, sorry.
Is there any other questions for Mr. Rats or Mr. Collier? So what we're looking at on this is the exterior, the walls, the masonry, the windows, the tuck point, doors, the facade, is everything that they're doing in line with the historic downtown preservation of this courthouse, yes.
Can I say one other thing, please? So Mark DeLasse, who has spent his entire life career working with the Indiana Preservation Historic Landmarks, he has been intimately involved in the design of the exterior of the building. He cannot give a written approval because there's not federal grants involved in the project, okay? Just to be very clear on that. But he's been involved in every step, part of doing on the exterior of the building, and from the Indiana Landmark Society, they have to give 100% approval of the project. He cannot give it writing, Mark's just recently retired, but I will let you know that he asked extensively the materials, how we were cleaning, the types of windows, the types of entrance points, the types of corbels, the fascia, the, the soffits, the roof materials, just the, because if you're aware of anything of historic projects in Indiana, Mark DeLasse is the guy, and we intimately involved him to make sure that he gave full approvals, and he did.
Sounds like you've checked all the, all the...
He checked everything, boy.
Question is, on the historic registry?
There are no federal grants or monies that's used for the project, so there is nothing that would propel them.
Is there any other questions?
Well, this is just a comment.
Yes.
I trust what you're going to do, but the only problem is, this elevation for me is, as I said, is a little bit, I, I can't see everything, so.
So we submitted over 200 drawings. I mean, we submitted the flock pack.
Yeah, so I, I understand, it's just that's what we're approving, and so, I mean, it, everything looks good, but, you know, that's...
You were given the cover sheet, there's over 200 drawings that were submitted, that talks about all the details, all the elevations, the building section, all the materials, that was all submitted in a pack. I've got a flash drive back here of everything, but literally, you got over 200 drawings. You, you only got the cover sheet, I didn't print that.
I, I'm just, I'm just saying...
Sure.
Okay.
Can I go ahead and make a motion that we pass docket number PC 25011?
We have a motion to approve docket number PC 25011 from Ann Miller.
I'll say it.
Rick Kecock seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
July 2nd, 5:30, approved your right to be there. Thank you.
Thanks.
Before you move on, I would just like to say, Commissioner Coyer, I appreciate what the county is doing in preserving this historic courthouse. It is a national landmark. I'm looking for, I, I might be one of the few that's like really excited about moving our office into that building, and I hope to continue Judge Williams' excellent Christmas Day Board tradition.
Absolutely. And I want to thank the board on behalf of the commissioners, and I want to encourage you and challenge you as taxpayers to keep an eye on it. This is your courthouse, this is your backyard. That's right. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, number four under new business, docket number PC 25012, historic district sign approval, address 80 West Washington Street, that's the back of the building. Owner is Red Brick Trading LLC. We have a representative here on this?
Yes, it could be me. My name is Brandon Taylor. I am the owner of Sauna Suites. It is the newest wellness spa for Martinsville.
Did you sign in there on the sheet?
Yes, I will sign.
Mr. Strater, do we have a, the mailings in place as well as those obligations turned in on this? Okay. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Yes, so I'm here requesting approval for my business logo to be applied to the two window fronts of that building. There are two doors facing the parking lot, and essentially what you have is the render for my logo, which is the circle with the flames, Sauna Suites, and then the Sweat Breathe heel. You'll see on the image, there's kind of a white background, that's just to show the contrast, the only part of the image is just the orange outline. That's going to be applied directly onto the glass, it's vinyl, and on the inside of the glass, it's frosted, so I'm hoping that's gonna be a nice contrast between the orange and the frosted backing.
Thank you for explaining that, because it, it looks like it's whited out.
Yeah, no, I, I save myself some money by not having the full white on the back, so you're done with that, and I think it's gonna be plenty for what I need it for.
Did you say that this is times two?
Yes, there are actually two signs, there's two identical window fronts, one on the right and one on the left, and I'm working with Signcraft out of Mooresville, and they're going to install it professionally as soon as I receive word if I approve it.
When is your business slated to open?
Mid to late July is the timing. The interior is complete, renovations have been ongoing since December. We have had final inspection approval, and yeah, we're just finishing up the last details.
Okay.
Do you have any idea of the square footage that the signs will cover and the square footage of the building face?
Roughly, these are, that square is about nine foot wide by about nine foot high, so I'm not covering the door or the top window or anything. The square footage of the building is approximately, well, I don't have the front of the building in square sheet, I don't have that.
Is it two-story?
It's two-story, right now I'm only leasing the first story.
Here's a new data.
Yeah.
The first level. So Steve, I, I kind of anticipated this, and I, and I did the calculation two ways. If the, if it was a solid color, it would be well over the size limitation, but with it being a translucent, transparent background, if we just pare it down to the size shown on that drawing, it does, it does fit in with our parameters. And even though, based on ordinance, I think because it's on an alley side, not the public road, we go by the linear foot of the front instead of the square foot of the face of the building, it comes in right under that limit though.
And this in the beginning, when this was first put together, the storefront, it was designed and set up for two office spaces, that's why there's two doors there.
Okay.
And since this young man here is occupying that, that's where you're at with the two double doors.
Okay. Any other questions? I entertain a motion on docket number PC 25012.
I'll make a motion that we approve docket number PC 25012.
I'll second it.
Clearly have a motion to pass and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Welcome to the community.
Good luck.
Okay, next up is, just between our members, discuss and vote on ordinance change. This is something that we talked about, it was brought up several months ago, on the mailings that go out from the building department on people filing procedures and stuff, and I asked Rick to, to go over this, so I'd like to turn the floor over to Rick Dernall and let him go over what he has got put down here.
Thank you. So, so Joe hit some of the background, we were, it was brought to our attention several months back, if everybody recalls, one of our petitioners stated that we were one of the few plant commissions that he worked with that still required certified mail. So I did a little research on that. And to go further, we were having an issue where sometimes we would get certified mail, sometimes we would get regular mail, and sometimes we get no mail. So we just had questions, and I think it's, we all feel it's very important to just be very uniform with how we deal with each petitioner. So did some research around our area, and Plainfield still requires certified mail, Bloomington, Hendricks County, Monroe County, Mooresville, it's a mixed bag, which is one of the reasons they use the affidavit of mailing, which is notarized as part of their documentation. But a little closer to home, and two that I'm, that I've worked with personally, Morgan County and Johnson County have both followed, updated Indiana Code, and they have went to certificate of mailing. So I'm not a postal worker, I'm gonna butcher this, but when you go on USPS.com, certified letter with the green return seat, receipt and signature required, comes to a total of $13.50 per mailing. A certificate of mailing is $2.20, and just to give a brief background of what that does, you take a stack of mail into the post office, they make a list of the names and addresses of where it's going, and when they put the postage on it, they stamp it, they stamp the certificate and give it to the customer when it's paid for. That way, we know at that date, it was placed into the postal service. So I think, personally, I just think it makes sense, if we require certified mail, we're asking our petitioners to pay to ensure that the postal service does their job.
And these are notices going out to members of the public?
Yes, yes. And then, so, so that's part of it, and talking with Laura Parker at Morton County, they've been doing this for several years and had not had any issues. She stated to me, and also I think we've gotten feedback from petitioners, that they send out certified mail, and a lot, a surprisingly high percentage of those letters never get picked up at the post office. The post office, they, the postal carrier will attempt to deliver it twice, and then leave a note that you can pick it up at the post office after this date, they don't get picked up. At least now, the certificate of mailing, we have to trust that the post office is delivering it to that mailbox. So it, I think it makes sense, it'll eliminate some financial burden from the petitioners while still following IC Code, which unfortunately, I don't have that particular code in front of me, but the second thing we wanted to clear up was the mailing to the commissioners or ourselves. Our current ordinance states that we have to be notified by mail, but it specifically, specifically says regular mail. I just, I think usually they don't, they don't read that far, so it just goes in with certified when we get it. I've gotten a little bit of feedback that perhaps that's an unnecessary step anyhow. It was, you know, Bob's office, Lisa has been emailing us the packets in plenty of time, and a lot of people feel that that, that serves as our notice for the meeting. There's, just to follow up with that, you know, we're, we're kind of, we try to limit improper contact, and that is one area where we're handing the petitioners our names and addresses, and not that it's happened, but that does open the door for other contact via mail or in person, so it just makes sense to have Lisa start forwarding that, and that will be our notice, so.
And that was one thing that I took notice of, just as a comment, I get, and as you guys all did, you get a certified letter that you had at home, then Lisa sent us our packet, so we had the same thing a second time, and then when we walk in here, we've got it a third time. So we've got the same thing three times, and the petitioners had to pay 1350 times 11 of us to send that out. So that's just my comment. Go ahead, Rick.
So I gave everybody two packets, and I want to focus on the first one, and we'll, I'll be as brief as I can on this. I, I hope that I caught each area that it pertains to, but in section 58-3, these, I just copied and pasted these into Word from our ordinances on the city website, so anything that's being changed is crossed out in black, and then there will be lettering in red either before or after that phrase, showing what we want to change it to. So most of them, and the very first one, we're just, we're just changing certified mail, return receipt requested, to a stamped certificate of mailing from USPS. Next, we all, we, and Gary was helpful in this, we had some discrepancies in here with our timing, we had certain sections that say 10 days, certain sections that say 15 days, some say two business days, so in an effort to just clean things up, we'll just do this with one fell swoop, we're changing 10 days to 15 days prior to the hearing here. Instead of the petitioner presenting the notices to us at the meeting, those should be turned in seven days before. And then we have another change from certified to stamped certificate of mailing, and we're striking the section where the petitioner shall give notice to the board members by regular mail. So that covers section 58-3.
And one of the reasons do I, am I not correct, and the notices shall be served at least 10 days and going to 15 days, is because of the size of our building department and giving them more time?
That I'm not sure of, it actually says 15 days on the, on the paperwork we handed out with the application.
Okay, okay.
So we're just, we're just trying to make it consistent.
Okay, okay. Yeah, and to answer your question, Joe, that is correct, the statute is 10 days. Martinsville traditionally, and I'm going back to the 90s now, we've always had 15, and that was because of the staffing and the number of folks that we have working, we find we needed additional five days in order to process all of that. So that's what we've always went with, we actually do more than the state statute, which is fine, there's no problem with that, and it works better for us, so my suggestion would be we stay with the 15 days.
And then one other area that we wanted to clean up is, at some point in the past, the office of the city superintendent handled this, it is now the building and planning department, so we just, we don't want to have confusion if somebody's looking at the actual ordinance, but section 94-145 subsection A, we're just changing superintendent office to building and planning department, subsection B has no changes, subsection C, again, just changing the office, and two business days to seven business, I'm sorry, to seven days prior to the meeting. On page two, subsection D, again, it's just the office title change, subsection E is changing from registered mail to certificate of mailing, and in the public notice box that's in bold, it's also the office change. Subsection F relates to the notice to the checkpoint agencies, there's several changes in this, one is the office, again, the certified mail to certificate of mailing change, and then we're gonna strike some stuff out of here that had to do with buffer zones. Since the buffer zones don't exist any longer, there's no need to notify the county sheriff in line one. Over on page three, line three and line four can be stricken, and in line five, we can strike any other fire departments having jurisdiction. Subsection G, we're just gonna strike altogether, we're gonna get our notice from the office itself, not from the petitioners. Subsection H is changing from, or actually, I'm sorry, this has to do with the affidavit, which in speaking with Mr. Coffey, we feel it prudent to continue to get that affidavit, it's just one, one more layer, it's, it's not terribly difficult to find a notary, I don't even know if maybe Lisa might be a notary herself, so we could, we could check on that certainly, but that's just changing, requiring the return receipts to the stamped certificate of mailing, changing the office name, and two business days to seven days. And just one more, because subsection I, J, and K remain unchanged, subsection L, we're just changing the name of the office that it goes through, so. Anybody have any questions on that?
Is this something we need to, oh, we do need to vote on it then?
We, we will vote on this after, anybody has any questions for Rick or for Dale? And we'll vote on this, and then once the vote has been taken, if this is approved, then this will be turned over and go to city council. If it does go to city council, I would ask that Rick or myself present this to city council from the plant commission, and if Rick's available, he said he would more than happy to present this to city council.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of points. The current certified mailing is quite onerous, it's, it's two parcels for 660 feet, can easily be a list of more than 50 mailings, so it can be quite expensive for them. If I heard Rick correctly this time, any place that says in there city superintendent should be changed to the building department, shouldn't be building and planning because it starts there, and then they give it to me, so it turns into them, and to Mr. Burkhart's comment earlier about how small things are to read and see, they're required to turn in three full-size sets of things, so you can get a big set if you need to see it, just come to Bob's office or my office.
I do have a question, and this is not Rick or Dale, but it's actually, do, how do that notarized statement happen now? Do they bring it in notarized, or do, do you guys notarize it?
Are you referring to the green card that is from the post office?
So with section?
With section eight, it says the petitioner saw 37 minutes of compliance of the notice requirements, so I fill in that. the notice requirements, so I fill in a notarized statement with the board of commission as is appropriate. So I was wondering how that is handled now?
He's talking about the last page on this handout.
Which is the affidavit?
That's the actual affidavit itself.
That's what it says, I don't believe that was correct.
Well, this is, this is what we require, is that in addition to them right now bringing in their green cards, bringing in their proof of publication, they also sign this document.
That is correct, yes, and Lisa takes care of the notary.
Okay.
That was my question. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for explaining that. I was a little bit lost, I had something else I was going to ask. So, Rick, clarify something to me, I'm a little bit confused.
Okay.
So, when we talk pieces of certified mail, that they pay X amount of dollars to get, and you sign for it, and that type of thing. So, you're referring to something that is less cost, correct?
Yes.
In, I just want to make certain that we don't fall short, or that person doesn't fall short, making, because we've caught a lot of slack from people that were not notified. And, and since Lisa has came on board with me, and I spoke with the mayor, a service that we now offer is, we give a list of people that is in that space, two parcels or the six hundred feet, if it's, if it's thirty properties or fifty properties, we give, we give who owns that property, we give that list. That's the notification. I just want to make certain that, that's still in place.
Yes, and that, so that would be a question that I think we would have as far as procedure goes. Are we, is the city providing that list of who needs to be notified?
We have started that, it's in place, it's done each time now.
Okay.
It started since Lisa has came on board.
And I, I will say that, in my limited research, that seems to be standard practice.
Yes.
They come in and, using the GIS maps, you can, you can draw a boundary, and it'll pull lists of all, all property owners and mailing addresses.
Well, with that, that way, you're certain that you, that person has done their homework.
Yes.
And then if the petitioner does what they're supposed to do, the certificate of mailing would have a list attached to it?
Yes.
That's been stamped by the post office saying, this was sent to these people. That's what they would present to the building department and sign an affidavit, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yes, and, and I should have explained, the second packet that you got isn't, I, I don't believe this is anything that we would vote on. I just printed off the application packet for, if a petitioner comes into the office to get, to start a petition. This is the information they're given. I just went ahead and, the only two pages that would change are the front page, which is the instructions, of course, and then, so I labeled the first one as old, that's the way it currently reads, the page after is what it would change to. And then, page three is the application. Page four is the public notice that they could take to the newspaper. Page five is the old affidavit of mailing, and the last page is what that would change to, and it says in there that you would bring the stamped certificate of mailing in and attach it to that affidavit as part of it. So, that would be our proof that they did take a letter to the post office on that day, and it was put in the postal system. We just have to trust that it was delivered.
With the attached addresses.
Yes.
May I make one suggested, tiny, but important? Anywhere where it says signature of applicant, can you put, can we add printed name of applicant as well? Because I often cannot read what is, who is submitting. So, printed name as well as signature, can we do that, please? On all these forms?
Please.
I think I could probably convince Lisa to...
That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for doing all this.
Yes, thank you, Rick.
Looks good.
And so, Gary, if I heard you correct, where we were changing the office of the city superintendent, it should say?
Should say building department.
Building department. Okay.
Not building and planning department. Building department. Okay.
So did I change this, please along this Dale?
Yes.
Where says city superintendent building, or Rick has building and planning, just say building department.
And I, I, if we, if we're able to vote on that, I can change the word document and...
Move forward. So I guess in our motion, we need to put in there that, where it says, yeah, where it says building and planning department, that the change needs to be made to building department, and we can still vote on it, and Rick can go in and change that before it goes to city council.
Well, I make a motion that we, we accept the new changes to the zoning and appeals procedure for notice with the corrections that were asked to be put in place.
Can we hear what?
Sir.
Mr. Burke, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. This is something that we've, we've heard from petitioners. I, in fact, whenever I had an attorney do my land stuff, that was one of the first comments he made, was the expense that was involved with the certified mail. So, this is something, I think that a lot of, a lot of community members that are wanting to do something have been helped back because of the expense of the certified mailings, which all went to the post office. It wasn't, this isn't anything that we're cutting out of money coming into the city building department.
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, I would, I was wondering if we have any update on the signed ordinance issue that we have been before us several times in the last few months?
Well, I think that what I could say on that is that we've got a new code enforcement officer with the city, what, two months?
Yes, sir.
So, right now, the, the current signed ordinance is being, we want to say?
I would, I would say put on old?
Well, the, the, we have a current signed ordinance in place, and the new code enforcement that is enforcing the signed ordinance that is in place as of this date. I think that the sign committee, we got to a point that, and Rick was the chairman of that, but I think I could speak for him in saying that we got to a point that it was kind of a gridlock, and we wanted to just kind of step back and wait a couple of months, and then relook at it later this summer.
What were the, what was gridlocked over?
There was a couple city council members that just, was responding to some of the words, so, they could get the wording that they wanted, so we're, we'll relook at it.
Come in, remind you the status, we approved a signed ordinance, city council did not agree.
Yes, so we approved, we, we sent it to city council with the favorable recommendation right, and they sent it back to us to, we worked on it in committee, and we, we met three times on it, and there was, there was some spirited debate on, I mean, I'll just say, the, the timing and allowances given for temporary signs. That's where ninety-five percent of the debate comes, stems from that.
Which temporary sign is just that? It's temporary. It's not a permanent sign. So, we're under the current signed ordinance that says that a temporary sign is thirty days?
Yes, ironically, the current ordinance is stricter than what we were trying to move to.
Yes, that is correct. So right now, the current signed ordinance is thirty days on temporary sign.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I may just share with the members here for just a short, about two months ago, I'm not sure if you all are aware of this, but our code enforcer with the city decided to retire and give that position come available, and I'm sure all of you know who Robert Downe is. He used at one time as the former chair here. He was in new alignment as code enforcer and building inspector. It is wonderful, he accepted the position here, things are working out greatly. I want all of you to know, I wish the whole board was here, because it's working out tremendously. He's all over it.
Thank you, Bob. So, Steve, that's where we're at, the first signed ordinance. We're, we're still under the original signed ordinance that we had, the legal that we presented to city council as a whole, and we'll, we'll, we'll get back to that, and we'll bring it back before planning commission, where we get the things worked out we need to do, and send it back to city council. Any other discussions?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
At twenty after eight? Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. I would like to tell you all that our next meeting is Tuesday, June the twenty-four, at seven PM. I will not be here. Mr. Gerdall will be up here, he is the vice chair, he'll be running the meeting, being ready to talk about this since the beginning of the year, so we have made sure that our vacations are opposite each other, so.
Conversely, you better be here in July.
Meeting is adjourned.
From what I saw, it's a lot of takeaways. Like that was around the...
Word of the minutes.
Yeah, try to get up to here. I give you, I give you a paper sign. I never talked about it before, you're going to get paid.
It wasn't, it was a paper, so it's right here. Yes, it was the minutes.
It was the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, it was the minutes.
And Jim laid it there beside where I was. You didn't let it in your binder.
No, you didn't send it, it's not a little pile.
You gotta think all over it until I told him.
I am, I'm course signing it. I'm good for you.
So, there's the hat.
I'm going to get paid.
Don't solve it.
How are you?
Good to see you. How big he is. Everybody do that.
This is Steve. This is my son.
What do you like it to do, what are you interested in? Well, that's exciting. That's really cool. What about your shirt? Dancing cars.
You're, you're a friend of one of those. He lives on a, nineteen fifteen state capes, is he going to have? Steve lives at St. Paul's.
I don't see it.
North Clean Street by nineteen fifteen restaurant, who does this? That you love.
There it is. Sorry. It must be. Sorry, Bob. Sorry, Rick.
Want to find it? The gym avenue?
So we just, so I think you should come see me if you're interested in that, if your eyes forget.
So, taking the solchester. And we got a load of shop. He is very... He has sang the national anthem. He was one of the first, I believe, Americans. He was a, he was a gentleman. Well, with your thing, things in charge. He was one of the first members of that movement. He was in the school. So, he mentioned. So, my mom came over. I don't know. Mister, I was, I was... Mister, I said seventeen thousand.
I did not.
You guys, okay?
I got you, I understand. You guys, you guys have a new head, you guys did it well.
Okay.
You guys, you guys.
Oh, we got, we got.
Hey, damn. You can't have meetings like this. No, you can't.
You gotta use that, you keep me on the toes. We gotta, we gotta go, we'll lock up, turn the lights off. Yes, you will.
Say goodbye. Ava?
Thank you.
Comes at, comes at me anytime, if your dad wants. Comes, comes to me anytime if your dad wants to bring you. All right, buddy. Have a good night too, okay?
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Have a good evening, okay?
You're welcome.
Trash, he must have trash bags picked up and he's Mark Allen Moss. And he's a big fan of hot printers. He's ready to every car, he's a hundred and forty. Worked it good in every car that comes in.
I think we probably haven't come into the battery down on the iPad for the. So, I have no idea how much of that meaning actually was.
Well.
But if we don't move the plug to that port that also charges it, then we don't have the sound. Did you need copy of these copies?
Oh, is that VCA or planning?
Plan changes? Might have given the extra seat for somebody who wasn't here.